Ready to go? Sam, we're good?
We're good.
All right. Let's go ahead and we're going to attempt to continue. Item 6.4. We had just tried to open it up for public comment. I want to make sure that we reopen it up just in case. Is there any comments from the public on this item? I see no hands in Zoom and no one moving in the chamber. So I want to bring it back to the board again. We wanted to provide direction. One of those directions was to continue with getting those signs up and continue with the creating that policy to make it a predictable policy of what happens during those times. I'd love to make sure that we have our library hours and our peer support hours written in those. That way it's easy to just automatically put it out there. One of them was to continue looking for grants. And I believe what I heard, and I want to make sure there's consensus for this, was to come back to review what kind of costs are we looking at to enhancing those types of services? And maybe bringing that back to us during our final budget to see what does that additional cost look like? And is that something that we can implement? Or is that something that we can't implement? What do you guys think?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's consensus to bring all of that back.
And just as an aside, I had a chance to speak with Pastor Shannon just after and before we broke for lunch. And she did confirm that our steps are the same as hers for when they open the community. So that's great. They don't have anything for warming centers, but for the cooling centers, it is the same.
And I agree with some of what my colleagues mentioned, which is, once we have that predictable environment, the likelihood of more people utilizing these systems is probably going to increase. The numbers will probably still be smaller than what we believe the impact actually is. But I think it's a needed and necessary service to ensure that people are in a safe place. Especially the vulnerable.
Exactly.
So with that, let's go ahead and close this item. Thank you very much for your presentation and the discussion that ensued from it.
Thank you.
We are going to move on to our 11:30 a.m. item, consideration of an agreement in the not to exceed amount of $691,068 between the County of Lake and SLR International Corporation for analysis of effects of proposed Scott Dam decommissioning. Welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. I'm very pleased to be joined by both Glenn March, our Public Works Director, and Patrick Sullivan, our Treasure Tax Collector, who served on our consultant selection panel for this item. As your board is aware, earlier this year, the County of Lake was awarded a $700,000 grant from the California Department of Water Resources to conduct an analysis of potential effects of PG&E's proposed decommissioning of Scott Dam. RFP 2432 was issued by the county seeking qualified firms to conduct this analysis. Two proposals were received by the submission deadline. University of California Cooperative Extension's proposal, prepared in collaboration with UC Davis, had a cost of $449,751 and proposed assigning two water management lab master students to develop modeling under the supervision of two PhD staff. And SLR International Consulting's proposal provided for more than a dozen highly qualified and experienced contributors in consideration of the very aggressive study timeline. And their proposal created a cost of $691,068. And as your board will appreciate, both of those proposed costs fall within the budget provided by the California Department of Water Resources grant. A consultant selection panel was convened to review the proposals pursuant to county policy. The consultant selection panel unanimously found SLR International Corporation to be the most qualified firm and most prepared to meet the scope of services in an appropriately timely manner in this case. Panelists cited the depth and range of qualified personnel that would be devoted to undertaking this project as a determinative factor. And one panelist noted that SLR had staff encompassing a greater range of specialty areas, for example. And SLR likewise proactively anchored their proposal to FERC and other regulatory timelines. And panelists felt that demonstrated solid understanding of the purpose for which the information being developed would be used. Bottom line, UCCE had presented a proposal with significant points of strength. And we were really deeply grateful for their and UC Davis's interest in collaborating with the county on this study. However, the consultant selection panel had greater confidence that your board would have the information you needed to appropriately engage in proceedings related to the proposed decommissioning of Scott Dam by working with SLR in this particular case. And that's why we made the recommendation that we did that's documented in your memo. And Lake County's Treasure Tax Collector, Patrick Sullivan, who served as a panelist, is going to add a couple of further details regarding the panel's considerations.
Thank you, Board. So first, I wanted to state that we really appreciate both proposals that were submitted. The SLR proposal, as stated, was broader and more expansive in the areas it would cover. They proposed bringing in technical experts that spanned all the areas associated with dam removal that the county was interested in. And also importantly, they are a neutral party. It was clear from looking through their materials and speaking with them that they had not worked on any aspect of the Potter Valley project in the past, had no connections to other groups involved. So they also fit that important need, that they were not otherwise affiliated with this project in any other way. They definitely demonstrated an understanding that the county was looking for in-depth analysis across a variety of scenarios. They're looking, for example, at things like the seismic stability concerns associated with Scott Dam, power generation, fish passage, sort of a broader set of circumstances and scenarios. We had invited, as part of the RFP, to expand and enhance the scope of work. And we definitely felt like they did that. They were able to step forward and identify other areas of concern and look at a bigger picture. I would say that they also demonstrated past work on prior dam removal projects and really seemed to understand the FERC timeline and how this work and study would fit into it. University of California proposal was narrower in scope. I mean, definitely well qualified and really valuable data is being proposed, but it does not have the same breadth as SLR from the committee's perspective. It does not touch on all the points of interest that the county has related to the study. And so considering it was cheaper, but I'd also note it just seemed worth it to pay the additional cost to get that more comprehensive study that spans those additional areas. So that's just a little more background on how the committee reached its decision.
So as noted in the memo attached to your agenda, staff does recommend that your board approve the agreement in the not to exceed amount of $691,068 between the County of Lake and SLR International Corporation, and authorize the chair to sign. And notices of the intent to award that agreement were distributed Tuesday of last week, August 6th, at 9 a.m. At 8:31 this morning, Matthew Barnes of University of California Cooperative Extension submitted a written protest. And typically, if we have a little bit more time before the board meeting, those would be reviewed by the Assistant Purchasing Agent or Purchasing Agent and can then be appealed to the county administrative officer. However, given the late hour, we invited Dr. Laura Garza, who is here to present the protest. And also, Dr. Samuel Sandoval Solis of UC Davis is in Zoom. And they can speak to the University of California Cooperative Extension's protest so that your board may then ultimately choose potentially to proceed with consideration of the agreement today. So following remarks regarding UCCE's protest, also, we have SLR consultants ready in Zoom. And they can provide a high-level summary of the work encompassed by the proposed agreement, if it pleases your board, following UCCE's remarks.
Please.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Garza. I am the Area Water Quality, Quantity, and Climate Change Advisor for the University of California Cooperative Extension, proudly serving Lake County. Supervisors, I stand by you to formally protest and request the reconsideration of the decision to award this project to SLR International Corporation. I believe that the proposal submitted by UC Cooperative Extension, or UCCE, presents a far more detailed and technically sound project to present to the FERC proceedings on July of 2025, but also aligns more closely with the long-term commitments for Lake County. Here are some of the supporting statements. Number one, expertise and community ties. UCC's mission is to support the communities that we serve as we bring a unique advantage with our deep ties to Lake County and the extensive work of world-class researchers and scientific investigators of the University of California. UCC's proposal is designed not just as a one-time project, but as a foundation for ongoing research and support for Lake County's environmental and social future. Number two, proposal quality and integrity. The quality of the UCC proposal surpasses the SLR proposal in terms of scientific depth, technical rigor, and overall value. A critical issue with SLR proposal is its only five-page work plan, which is only a table of tasks that lacks objectives, data sources, references, or mention of any previous research and models that have been already done in the area. SLR approach is fragmented and traditional, offering only reports and inventories as deliverables. Importantly, several of these inventories and some of the models that they propose have already been completed in previous studies for Lake Pillsbury or Scott Dam. In addition, the SLR proposal contains numerous grammatical errors and repurposed content from other projects without customization to Lake County's specific needs. This lack of depth is particularly alarming given the almost 700,000 valuation of their proposal. This oversight suggests that SLR may not have invested the effort in researching, understanding, and committing to this project nor to Lake County. In contrast, UCC's proposal value at $450,000 is grounded in scientific rationality. With clear integration of bridging the already existing models and diverse data sources, we use peer review methodology to provide holistic and well-informed understanding of the dam removal impacts. It also provides a comprehensive suite of deliverables, including a decision support system, adaptation strategies portfolio. And in addition, our proposal includes significant components of community engagement, ensuring that the voices of Lake County's residents and stakeholders are heard and integrated into the final outcomes. These are tools designed to support Lake County's efforts to showcase in the FERC proceedings of 2025, but also to ensure long-term decision-making plans and needs. And the third statement is the unequal opportunities of engagement. Another concerning aspect was found on exhibit E from the agreement document between the County of Lake and SLR International Corporation. In this document, it shows that SLR Consulting met with the selection committee on July 3rd to discuss their proposal, but also to make adjustments and clarification directly with the selection committee. While UCC was not given a similar chance to discuss their proposal, despite requesting clarification of any questions on June 12th and on June 14th. This disparity in opportunities raises questions about the transparency of the selection process because all bidders were not given equal opportunities to engage with the selection committee. Given the significant advantages that UCC proposal offers in terms of effects of the dam removal, community engagement, local expertise, cost effectiveness, and scientific quality, we respectfully request that the County of Lake reconsider this award decision. We believe that partnering with UCC on this project will be in the best interest of Lake County, providing not only immediate benefits, but also laying the groundwork for future collaborations. Thank you.
Did we have more from Mr. Sandoval?
Yes, here is some Sandoval. And if you can turn on the camera. So I think, allow me to turn on the camera.
I don't know if that's possible.
Okay. So there you go. Hi, my name is Samuel Sandoval Solis. I'm a professor and cooperative extension at the University of California, Davis. So in terms of neutral, we've always been neutral. Whenever we've been working with any of the partners, we've never sided on one side or the other. Some of the credentials that we have had and that I'm sure the consultants will have to review is that we have done applied research related to the reliability of Lake Mendocino, Potter Valley project viability. We've also have worked with groundwater sustainable agencies in the area. And we have actually estimated the natural flows on the Eil River. I would like to put on the chat some of the pictures that you can see us actually in action. Something that I mentioned is that people don't care how much you know. People want to know how much you care. And in this case, with some of those pictures that you're going to be able to see there, we have engaged with the community. We have been there since early 2010s in this issue. In this moment, we are not asking for a special treatment or evaluation. We are asking to have the same communication and same opportunities that the consultants have given. We know the longest story of extractivism from Lake County, from Mendocino County, by Jolo and Sonoma. We've been actually providing by us with your taxpayer money. We've been at the service of the communities. Here you have two people paid by the government that we are putting in front of you the services of your taxpayers to engage, to continue engage with the community. The one other thing that we are putting at the, we do know the system inside out. Like, if you're asking how much is Pillsbury Dam, Scott Dam, Potter Valley, how much water is generated in the Opelika River, the Middle Fork, the South Fork, Vandusen? We have done it. We know the system inside out. The one last thing that I do want to mention is that we are providing, we are willing to provide not only a report, but open tools and information and a forum that will last longer in these issues that, as we know, water is very important. Water is the true gold of California. And what we want is that it is not only the knowledge and the tools and the services are not only available for you, but for the entire community to lay the foundation of the information, of the tools, of the data that will be put it outside and that it can serve anyone, everyone in Lake County and in California besides our time in this project. So thank you for reconsidering it. And again, we're not asking for a special treatment, just the same treatment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further from UCC? Looking at you, Mr. Rothstein. Were those the only representatives?
I believe so. So yeah, those were the representatives from UCC. However, we do have representatives from SLR also on the line and prepared to make a high-level presentation if it pleases your board.
Well, let's make sure to give them some time to also speak on behalf of their submission.
Okay. So Dr. Rathmalyak, are you there and able to introduce your team?
Yes, I can. Hopefully, everybody hear me. And I have my several key members with me, and they're all on the camera. So I appreciate input provided by the Dr. Sandoval and also Dr. Garza. So considering, you know, what we did, and I wanted to quickly give a minute of, you know, who we are and what we do. And my name is Dr. Darmirat Naik, and I have a PhD in Water Resources Engineering, similar background like the two professors that we heard from. And I've done these type of projects in California and all over the United States for over 30 years now. So what we did was we really spent the time to understand the county's need based on the RFP and other documents that are provided. As Matthew mentioned, you know, we were not associated with the work that are going on with the Lake Pillsbury or the commission, but we are pretty well-diverse group of people understand the Power Regulatory Commission network, General Energy Regulatory Commission, and California regulators who control power and also have run into the PG&E stability and expectations of how we do these things. So with that, I also wanted to give 30 seconds of interviews. Other people, Maria Loca, she is a registered geologist, understands geology, hydrogeology, and groundwater modeling aspects in the basin. Maria, if you are there, please wave your hand. And also, we have Dr. Osman Pekin. He's a seismic and geotechnical expert who understands the dams and work extensively on dam-related projects. And we are concerned obviously about the removal of the dam with respect to seismic aspects, slope stabilities, and other things. I think we haven't seen much of that information from the FERC applications. We have reviewed that PG&E and the consultant submitted to the thing. We have reviewed that PG&E and their consultant submitted to the thing. And also, so he will provide that expertise. I know you asked on the task one to provide any additional area that we think the county need to consider in terms of impacts. And we also have Brenda Peters. He's one of our NEPA experts and who deal, you know, NEPA is the federal government regulation that controls permitting and aspects of various elements, just like the California Environmental Quality Act. So we see some of the areas of, you know, beneficial aspects of, you know, biological resources and others that we need to take a closer look at, how PG&E has addressed those. And also, we have Mo Bazagani. He is a waste management, waste material management expert and also post-examination expert. We have our in-house data and other data we are going to use in terms of providing an economic analysis, which is really an important aspect we have discovered from the RFP and the conversation we had on July 3. And so we know PG&E doesn't have a whole lot of plan about what are they going to do with the material that are generated from the demolition and decommissioning of the dam, other than loosely mentioning some of them. But what's left in the county is going to be a responsibility of the county, and there is costs associated with that. And similarly, we have our alliance partner, California Certified Veteran Administration Business, who does a lot of community outreach, stake outreach work, Steve Longoria. And he can provide the community aspects of that. He had done similar work, and we have bilingual capabilities in our team. So all of the team and there are other team members that are not in the meeting here today. We selected specifically to address the RFP requirements of identify the impact, what are the good options for mitigation strategy. We have the excellent capabilities of hydraulic modeling, applied O-50 dam decommissioning projects, inundation studies, and other things. So we bring out all of that experience for you to do that. Can you go to the next slide, Maria, please? Yeah, so I think, you know, I already mentioned about this. We know what you asked in the May 3 RFP, and we have addressed all aspects of that and then looking into the true effects and how that's going to impact the county. And also, we know Lake Pillsbury has been a very vital part for the county. And also, we want to document what PG&E has done so far in the application to convince the NUPC and the community, you know, this is an appropriate action that they should take without, you know, considering maybe the all impacts of this. We'll spend and rather than reinventing the wheel, we'll see what they have done, and we'll document that to define the issues. And if the data gaps are fine, we found the data gaps, we will actually collaboratively work with the county to create an approach. How to approach, and we do have all the modeling capabilities that we needed to address those. And similarly, we know you're losing revenue from various aspects, agriculture, and the... So we will look at, very closely look at, you know, what are those revenue impacts? And we'll come up with, based on our impact analysis, you know, what are the additional impact that we needed to give you an idea, what the loss of value, what the additional cost in more, both in terms of agricultural, your recreational areas, as you know, wildlife, and the summer run is a concern that has raised variety of times. And also, the 600,000 Californians, you know, water resources, drinking water resources, as well as for firefighting. So we're going to look at all of them as you requested us to do in the RFP. Next slide, please. Yeah, so I think we, I already mentioned about, you know, who we are. We are a well-recognized worldwide firm with more than 475 people and more than 60 people in California here. So we have the local resources, and we have bring that experience from both from the removal design experience, also providing studies for the owner and the impacted communities, you know, how that being analyzed and economic impact divided. And also, it's important for you to recognize, we have three small businesses. We know you get funding from the state, and we have included them, including ANCO Technology, that Steve Longoria is with us today, and two others, a small micro business who brings water resources expertise, Daubre Incorporated, and a NEPA expert, also California small business. And go to the next slide, please. Yeah, so we really wanted to, you know, understand the, you know, what are the PG&E's plan? And we have removed already part of that, but I think we need to get to more detail and access through the city's, you know, website, the PG&E website, that we'll do a quick, you know, evaluation to certainly, you know, understand that and capitalize on that existing database, including other reports and other things, even the UC extension just mentioned. And then we want to focus on economics and loss of resources, and also the community understanding of what that mean to them. So we collaboratively work with and reach out and document those things, really focus on those areas. And then we also know we need to comply with the grant requirement that you have already agreed, and which has become, which is becoming a part of contract requirements. Next slide, please. Yeah, so as you had noted in the request for proposal, that we will address all these items. I don't need to go into the detail, and we have told them in a tabular form, you know, how do we approach them on this primary task areas, some subtask areas, you know, how to collect the data, how to identify the data gaps, and then document and evaluate what are the real impacts of for the County of Lake. And then we have, as I mentioned, you know, capabilities in modeling, GIS analysis, you know, evaluating of metric data. And then we have developed a variety of adaptation strategies that might include, you know, no action and partial action, maybe not full dam removal or full dam removal, all of them because it's important for you to understand, you know, what are those ramifications are and what are the responsibilities of the county that you want to take. And then we did mention about the additional aspects. We need to look at the groundwater flows and the geotechnical considerations of soil stability and seismic aspect, because I know PG&E doesn't want to spend the money on retrofitting either the special ladder or the, you know, seismic upgrade that are necessary. They would rather take the course of removing the dam without potentially not looking at all these impacts. Next slide, please. Yeah, so we have, you know, we reviewed the NUPC's desire, and PG&E has really driven the train already. And then we are in the last run here to get, and I'm glad that, you know, NUPC is giving the county success from months to really give the comment. So we wanted to make sure we jump on, start to review information, and we give on behalf of the county, the NUPC, the real analysis of what's missing and what's not missing in a short period of time. And then we will create a memorandum of findings, you know, within a matter of, you know, a couple of months, because that way you can submit this, your comment to the NUPC, you know, before the November timeframe. And then obviously, we also have aggressive schedule to get you what you need from evaluating the strategy, looking at what are the best, you know, cost ramifications are, and then deliver a report by about, you know, end of April 2025, which is as a large firm that we have done these things. We can deliver those without, you know, really any issues because we have the resources and capability to meet with you collaboratively. Next slide, please. Yeah, so as I mentioned, you know, I only show a half of the organization chart. You know, we have identified a lot of resources that we have locally and also regionally to accommodate to the needs and the schedule we have proposed. And we fully expect, we have worked with our partners, small business, and they will support us meeting with that. And the next slide, please. And with that, we are available, or my team is available to answer any other particular questions. We have, you have honorable board of supervisors and the other members. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rothstein. Anything further from you and your team?
So I think the team's primary goal is to support on any question that the supervisors or anybody else has in the meeting.
Yep, I appreciate that, and we'll get back to the board. First, I want to check in, sorry, Mr. Rothstein. Is there anything further from your team?
Yeah, so I do have just a couple of comments. And primarily, so we, the consultant selection panel did an initial review that was based on the proposals only. And the consultant selection panel unanimously scored SLR as the highest ranking firm. So we met with SLR additionally and not with UCC separately because as of how those scores were tracking, SLR was clearly the top-ranked proposal. So in scenarios, if any red flags had been encountered, for example, in that meeting that had suggested that it may affect the panel's decision, we certainly would have engaged to a greater extent with UCC as well. But the follow-up meeting with SLR was more toward, you know, development of our agreement with them because they were already the top-ranked firm. So I wanted to provide that clarification because there wasn't a difference in process. In a sense, we did weigh both proposals equally with the consultant selection panel. Since there was a clearly top-ranked proposer, we had a subsequent meeting just to check everything out and make sure that the proposal was clear to move forward.
Appreciate the clarification. Anything further before we bring it back to the board?
Hi, from here, just do have a comment. Can I?
Yeah, go for it. Please be brief.
Yep, so just to mention that we do have expertise in the economic analysis. The consultants will figure out that a lot of the economics related with part of the counties, they will have to look at the cooperative extension reports. So that will happen, and we actually work with those. And I think also related to that, the appearances, if it was on the process of bidding, a recognition that that can be adjusted, it should have been given the opportunity, both of us. And perhaps the last question will be if there is an SLR person in the room, because that can shows the commitment of SLR to the community. And to me, that's something that I just want to mention. If it is all this important for the community, for the people there, I think short travel from the members in California there, they just need to, they are closing a contract with the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'll bring it back to the board. Any comments or questions regarding this item? We're being asked to provide feedback on the appeal, whether we're asking staff to go back and review the appeal and provide a response, or if we want to give a response directly today and direct staff as to what that response will be. Just want to open that up for discussion.
With what you just said, are we on a time constraint, or do we have time for that?
And I would look at Mr. Rothstein. I have an idea of what the response is, but I want to make sure it's the correct response.
Yeah, yeah.
No, 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 the question is to staff.
Yeah.
So we're still within the timeframe of the protest procedure for staff to provide a written response. However, we felt it was important to give your board the opportunity to understand the content of the protest today and still provide the chance for you to move forward with the agreement as recommended, if that is the will of your board collectively.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, because if we can allow them to answer, then that, and we can make a decision next week, I'm fine with that. But if it's time crunching...
So if I can speak, just the timeline pressure. The primary timeline pressure is the need to get started with the work of the study to provide input in the FERC and other regulatory processes. So right now, we'd be gathering background so that we're ready when the FERC process initiates, when PG&E files their application. Patrick may have additional comments.
Yeah, I would also add, just the nature of these two proposals were quite different. SLR, at least from my understanding, is proposing looking into a number of other areas and a number of other issues that the UC Cooperative Extension was not. It's a different set of experts, a different set of studies that are being proposed. So I don't know if there's any further clarification of that, but I guess if staff was going to be looking to a further response, I'd be wondering, are we essentially saying, can the UC proposal cover all those same areas that the SLR proposal is? What are we looking for?
And if you don't mind my clarifying, I think he was asking, can we postpone, give you the ability to respond on your own to this appeal, and then bring it back to the board?
That's my only, yeah, that's my only question.
Any other comment? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I like the suggestion. I know there's a need for speed, but this is a multi-year thing, and a one-week delay, I don't think is going to put us at substantial risk of being non-responsive. And I do notice County Reserves the right to select multiple contractors. So although neither of these are really tailored to work together or have even phrased the issues necessarily in the same exact set of work plans, I think they both speak in some of the same language. And one reason I might buy that week and at least take a look at this is if there's anything at fault with this, it's perhaps the overbreadth of the study. And I know they are hitting all the checkmarks in the RFP, and I know the RFP was scoped broadly by intent to meet the grant criteria. But there are some Lake County impacts that interest me a whole lot more than, say, modeling of water supplies downstream, which is not to say that water supply in other communities is not important in Mendocino and Sonoma counties, and that the grant we received would allow, if not require, some modeling to address that. But that's, that to me is not the center of this. So taking an extra week just to get a formal response to UCC out of respect and to maybe encourage just a little informal meeting confer to say, you know what? This is a big thing. And so while we do have an immediate need for a short-term contract, so we can be responsive to FERC, and I agree with the analysis that the recommended action probably is closer to that. We also have need for long-term management strategies that UCC is a trusted partner. And so I'm looking for a win-win here, and I think a one-week delay may help us examine that.
Supervisor Green?
Hold on, please. Hold on, hold on. We're discussing amongst the board right now. Vice Chair, please.
So my reasoning is procedural, you know, just the fact that they put a, you know, protest in and just to look at it. But when I look at the situation attacked, you guys made a decision after looking through both. The biggest thing for me is we have been telling FERC, PG&E, Russian River Water Forum, Two Basin Solution, that we do not, we are not in agreement with a lot of the studies that they bring to us because it's often biased. And we don't, and I don't feel comfortable giving that impression here. Obviously, UCC is under our auspices in some instances, and it could be viewed and disregarded because of that optic, if that makes sense. So for me, I mean, it's, I would rather have not only the, you know, the optic of the fact that they stated that they would be unbiased, but also just to go into it with a clean mindset. But my comment about the week is mainly because of what's been submitted. And I just like, you know, that's what that was about. But I wanted to state, you know, that that's the biggest thing for me is that these other groups that we've been dealing with that are pro-decommissioning always come with a bias, and none of our information or our outlook as well. Because of that doesn't mean we have to do something biased, if that makes sense. I'm feeling like we still need to, you know, take the higher road and have a group that's unbiased. Again, my statement about the week is procedural.
Right. Any further comments? I'm in agreement with the last comments that was just made by the vice chair. And it's not a bias, it's a perceived bias that we are making sure. And I know that we had some good conversations with water resources in order to get these grants. And while maybe those words specifically were not used, there was definitely some hesitation to providing us the grant in creating a situation of biased information that would be utilized. And so I want to make sure that that perception is not there. I want to trust our staff members, our directors. I want to trust our staff members, our directors, who took their time to review these RFPs and come to a decision which was unanimous. I want to respect that. The timeline is critical to me. I know a week doesn't seem like a lot, but I think we're behind. The submission of the plan is slated for January of 2025. We're looking at potentially sometime in mid-2025, if not potentially later, because this contract does go all the way out to December to finish and finalize this, this research. I really appreciate UCC-E and what you do, and it's not about going for the lowest dollar, it's ensuring that we get what we are looking for, for the outcome of this situation we're dealing with at Scottsdale. Yes, we have a certain special connection with UCC-E. It's not the same connection as we would have with Public Works, but we still do manage the budget. We still do make decisions that are related to UCC-E, and that could create a perception that we are in conjunction in what we are doing. I, I would like to bypass that week because I think the outcome is the same and just make the decision and help staff and direct staff to respond to the appeal. I, I will say it's, it's, I'll, I'll watch my words, but having an 11th-hour protest coming at 8:30 in the morning does not lead to the outcomes of what this contract is, is meant to do, which is to get the, the data and start moving forward so that we can get in front of FERC before they make a final decision. I really wish we could have had this on Friday. I really wish we could have had this on Monday to really give us the time, but to receive this at 8:30, I know you're not our Department of Lake County, but I feel like we're publicly having a little bit of an infight today, and it's kind of embarrassing me. And so it's not something I'm very comfortable with, with what's happening today. I really wish we would have received this in time so we could have had a more private conversation to discuss these things. But I, I would like to bypass the week, move forward, and approve the agreement today. Mr. Carter?
The one part I wanted to bring out with the, within the protest procedures is that the appeal needs to state the specific alleged violation of law or alleged material irregularity. So your board would need to make that determination, whether it even meets a criteria of being able to be appealed versus just, we like our presentation better or proposal better than the other.
But that's only if we agree with the appeal. If we, if.
The appeal has no merit unless you find that it stated there was a material irregularity, et cetera. Otherwise, the appeal doesn't have merit and wouldn't even be considered.
I appreciate the, the comment. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I appreciate it. Obviously, I appreciate, appreciate the relationship with UCC-E, and I did have a conversation with Stephen that I was reached out to with one of our local representatives, you know, about this contract as we move forward. I appreciated the clarification that you gave earlier to Matthew on the second conversation and the update that happened. You know, I'm willing to move forward today. I would have went with another week too, if that was the majority of the board, just to get the response out and things like that. You know, what I want to do is have the discussion on how important it is. And, yeah, it might look like a little bit of infighting or may feel uncomfortable with it, but I do like if, if there's something that's going on in a partner or something, having an opportunity to speak up and give that opportunity. So I think that's really important. Yeah, it, it's not always easy what we do here, and this is a huge, huge, long-term project for us. So I am prepared to move forward today. I think we'll continue to build the relationship with UCC-E. This SLR, LSLR group that we'll be voting on today, I think this is the first project we've done with them, right? I haven't seen anything like this come through. So bottom line is, if you're going to get the project, you better do the project correctly. You know, at least while I'm here the last time here in Lake County. But, um, you know, those opportunities that are given, I think, as we move forward, and some of maybe the deficiencies that UCC-E had brought up, we'll make sure that we focus on and work through there. So I'm always looking at county council as conversations are happening and also, you know, with explanations or something like that. But, um, you know, I, I think the procedural concerns I had were answered today. Matthew, when you talked about which one was the leader and how the conversation happened as it moved forward. So, but I also want to acknowledge, I do appreciate people being in the room. I know we have one individual from UCC-E who's online, but we do have, it's Dr. Garza, am I right, here in the, in the building, which is really important because it's great to do studies on paper. We always deal with it, all of our projects. A road might look good on paper, but when they build it, they've got to come back every year to fix it. Doesn't look good. So engineers and scientists sometimes look at stuff good on paper, but it doesn't practically work. So I clearly hear the concerns from UCC-E, but just wanted to address all that. But I am prepared to move forward if there's someone's going to make a motion today.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
Yeah, you mentioned something, Supervisor Simon, that I, that I wanted to highlight. No offense to, to Patrick and Matthew, but we, we, I brag on the fact that we have Glenn March here, who is an engineer. So the fact that he made this determination, I don't want to, you know, second-guess that either. So I just wanted to highlight that. I do appreciate the, the time you put into it and the expertise that you have to be able to identify. So, yeah.
So I see no pens up, and it's come to my attention that I did not open it up for the public at this moment in time. I opened it up for the, those that submitted proposals. Before I open up public comment, I do want to go back to Mr. Rothstein.
So I just want to say, out of, out of fairness to SLR, they did ask about whether they needed to be here in person or not, and we did not anticipate that we were going to be receiving a protest at that time. And their team are in, you know, disparate locations, and I had said I thought it would be appropriate for them to contribute via Zoom and that that was common practice. So I want to make sure that that information was out there so it wouldn't be interpreted as SLR having a lack of commitment. They did ask.
Thank you very much. All right, let's open up public comment. We have Frank Lynch.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, first and foremost, I want to thank the board and staff for all the time they've been putting into this. I very much appreciate it. And I also do want to state that I all, as well have respect for UCC-E. I've dealt with them in the past, and I know that you do very good work. But I do have faith in your staff in making their selection on the consultant to be chosen. My concern is, one, that there is a limited timeframe to get something out, to get the background done, and be prepared to respond to PG&E's filing with FERC, and that the FERC response be timely. But I'm hoping that whatever consultant is chosen, whatever set of data you choose, that you're setting yourself up to be best advantaged in the long term beyond the term of this just response to PG&E's filing, and that this is going to go on for quite a long time, and we really need to focus on remediation and mitigation that has become necessary should the dam be removed. And again, I thank you very much for your time and your effort regarding this project. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you also for your citizen advocacy on the side of Lake Pillsbury Alliance. Next is Betsy Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to speak as a member of the public because of the fact that this protest was lodged at 8:30 this morning, there is no documentation for the public to review, to weigh the merits of considering UCC-E's protest. So I hope that, you know, regardless of your decision, I hope that the documentation from UCC-E will be made available to us so that we can consider what other possibilities might be available from UCC-E in addition to the, the decision you make today for the selection of the consultant. Thank you very much.
I appreciate your comment, and I know that was part of the discussion this morning. The protest letter was put in on Granicus, so if you reload your Granicus and the agenda, you will see that as one of the attachments that was put up this morning before 9:00 AM, I believe. We also printed out some copies here for those that are in the chamber to be able to access that same letter. So it is available and made public, and we appreciate that. Appreciate your comment. And I see no further hands up in Zoom. I see no one moving in the chamber, and so I will go ahead and bring it back to the board.
Can I just go one, one last time?
At, at this point, I want to bring it back to the board and see where we stand. So thank you, but at this moment, no. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, so although a couple comments, protest was not timely received, but process-wise, we're halfway through a protest hearing. So to the extent we're going to stick to our guns and say this was properly handled, was there a notice of intent to award letter or a formal bid opening? And what was the date of the letter?
The notice of intent to award was sent Tuesday of last week, August 6, at 9:00 AM. And so the last possible point at which to submit a protest would have been 9:00 AM this morning.
So it was timely filed. And just to speak to the earlier comment, I believe, I believe the protest letter has been posted to Granicus. I believe the question, just as my questions, applied to the substance of both of, both of the bids. I'm assuming the bids would be public record at this point and could be posted later?
Yes, they would be public record at this point.
All right, so if we are receipt, in receipt of a timely protest, then within 72 hours of the receipt of that appeal, we shall provide written notification to the appellant of the And I guess today's agenda item may serve as a de facto written notification, but if we are going to stick to our guns and follow the protest procedure that was described in the RFP, county council, can we act today?
All right, a short answer to that would be yes. The, under section 2-46.3, the 72-hour period refers to the purchasing agent or assistant purchasing agent sending that written notification to the appellant of its determination. Of course, that determination ideally would be, would, would be contingent on what, because it involves the same item, the same matter, would be, it would be contingent on what your board's decision is in relation to the award of the, of the award of the contract to the, to the proposed contractors. So procedurally, that, that's where we, where we are now.
I'm looking at 7.3, so within 72 hours of receipt of the appeal this morning, purchasing agent or assistant person's agent shall provide written notification to the appellant of the determination, and after that determination, it shall be final, except the purchasing agent's decision may also then be appealed to the CAO in writing within 48 hours from receipt of the determination that they have not had the opportunity to receive yet. So under 7.3, and even though we've already talked it through, and there's slim chance that, you know, this would get approved if we're delayed, if we're going to stick to our guns on the propriety of our protest procedure, then we should do all of it, top to bottom.
Well, in this particular case, the, you know, and Officer Carter might, might provide some clarification on this, but my understanding is the purchasing agent is the same, has the same role as the county administrative officer's office. In this case, for, as it relates to this bid that was put out, it was administration that put this out to, to bid. So if, if procedurally, board were to, to utilize the 72-hour period along with the 48 hours, it actually would be submitted or fall into, under the same reviewing, reviewing entity or reviewing department, which would be administration. So again, and in either case, even under that scenario, that is also contingent on what your board would, what your board's decision would be as to the awarding of the bid. It's a bit of an overlap, understand that, because, primarily because this protest document was submitted the same day as the agenda item is presented to your board for award. Mr. Carter, do you have anything to add?
Well, I will say, one way or another, there will be a letter coming from me as the purchasing agent to the UCC-E, and that will be colored by what your board says today, and that will be within the 72 hours. And even if it was appealed to the CAO, we're going to go with what the board said in the first place. So there would be no going back, changing minds, any of that.
Bringing it back to the board. Sorry to look at you, vice chair, but I know this is in your district. This is a, a project that we've been discussing for a while, and just kind of looking to, for you to take the lead on, on how you would prefer the board to take action.
I do appreciate Supervisor Green's comment. It is important to follow those specific procedures, but I think county council and CAO, Stephen Parker, has, has given, I don't want to say junior, has given us enough to move forward. So I'll, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay, then looking for action.
So motion to approve the agreement?
Do, Mr. Guentavano, do we need to first deal with the appeal before moving forward with the agreement? I'm sorry to interrupt, vice chair. In this particular instance, procedurally, since the county code, the reference county code section designates the, the response to the purchasing agent slash CAO administration, essentially, the response would come from that office. And so for your board's purposes, no response to the bid protest would directly come from your board, it would actually come from administration. Of course, conceptually, it's, it hinges, it is contingent to what your board decides on as it relates. So I'm paraphrasing that if we have a motion to approve the agreement is also a direction to staff to respond. Is, is there consensus for staff to respond to the protest letter saying that we are moving forward with the agreement with SLR?
Prior to a vote, yes.
Yes.
Okay, looks like you have that direction. And vice chair, again, I apologize for the interruption.
So I move to approve the agreement in the not-to-exceed amount of $691,068 between the County of Lake and SLR International Corporation for Analysis of Effects of Proposed Scottsdale Decommissioning and authorized chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All good? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any oppose?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our 6.6 item, public hearing, consideration of planning commission's recommendation to approve Valley Oaks tentative subdivision map extension, SDX 24-01, to extend subdivision SD 06-01 located at 18761 Hartman Road and 18196 and 18426 South State Highway 29, Middletown, lots 24, 36, and 51. And that's APN numbers 014260-51, 014260-36, and 014-260-24. And Director Turner, floor is yours.
Thank you. Me, Ray Turner, in a totally wrong spot this is throwing me. Director of Community Development, what you have before you today is a request for an extension on the Valley Oaks subdivision map. I will turn it over to Assistant Planner Max Stockton to present our staff memo. Thank you.
Good afternoon, supervisors. This extension has been requested by Valley Oaks Partners as their third and final extension, and they would like to extend their extension for two more years pending your approval. This project was originally approved in 2018. The first extension came in the year 2020 for two years. It was then extended again on October 5, 2022, for a period of one year. And now before us, we have a third request. The Lake County Subdivision Ordinance, Section 17-22.9B, allows for the subdivision extension for a period not exceeding three years. However, the California Government Code, Section 66452.6E... However, the California Government Code, Section 66452.6E, allows for that extension for a period or periods not to exceed six years. The affirmation, the aforementioned section of this California Government Code allows the proposed subdivision map extension beyond the three years. As stated in the Lake County Subdivision Ordinance, up to this total of six years, therefore, the county may be more restrictive, but may also be reasonable and allow flexibility, so long as we do not exceed the California Government Code. Valley Oaks has an application currently submitted with the Planning Division for their Stage 1 of the final map. Yet, the Lake County Code, Section 17-10.2, requires that this extension be approved by you, the board, before proceeding. Planning Commission recommended on June 27, 2024, that you, the Board of Supervisors, do approve this extension. Therefore, staff would like to recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve this third and final extension of subdivision map SD 0601 for a period of two years with the findings found in the staff report. Thank you.
If I could also add, the Valley Oaks developers have been working diligently on satisfying their conditions of approval. We do not anticipate that the full two years will be necessary. In fact, we are just finalizing our staff review or department review to make sure that all the required conditions of approval have been met prior to scheduling approval of the final map before this board.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Any comments, questions?
No.
Okay. I do want to ask one question. I'm totally accepting and willing to move forward, but in the way that the subdivision regulation code does read, it does limit it to three years specifically. I know we can't be more loose than what the state offers, but we can be more restrictive. But I don't see anything here that says, outside of the state law, that would say that. But it would be really nice if we could change the code so that it matches the state code. I think it would make it a whole lot easier for everybody to see what are the true limitations, unless we really want it to be three years, which at this point, we're not saying we want it to be three years. So, that's just something I wanted to bring up, just because it's a little confusing to have two separate things and not anything that says, unless you follow state law, and it does not say that.
Duly noted.
That's my only comment. I'm not looking for consensus, you do what you want with that comment. And let's open it up for public comment.
Good afternoon to the board, staff. My name is Rick Tookar, Milan News Planner for Pharrell LeBron and Martel here for the applicants. You all know Fletcher Thornton, who's here in the audience on Zoom, is the applicant and owner of the property, Keith Gappason and Rick Sovereign. I appreciate the staff report. This represents, as Max noted, the third request for an extension. The context is kind of important. I know the Planning Commission was a little bit interested in this in June, expressing some frustration that projects can go slowly. And they can go slowly because of staff. I've spent 35 years as planning staff director, and projects can go slowly. They can go slowly, but also because of the developer. So, I'm pointing fingers. The first extension, if you recall, looking back, was after approval of the subdivision map in 18. There's about a two-year process of getting the first subplan of development for the grocery outlet together, so getting that bundled, getting that to the Planning Commission. There was an appeal, some time to go to the board, ultimately unanimously approved. But you can see kind of what happens in that process. When a subdivision map is approved, and it has a two-year initial time period by which the map would otherwise expire, well, that was all eaten up, of course, in the first development process. The second and third ones, the second being in 2022, this third one proposed to you today, which were for one and now two years successively, three total. They can be a little frustrating, I think, on the development side because we've been locked in process. That's essentially the bottom line. A perfect example is this application for the two-year extension was filed before the expiration in January. Here we are in August, we're essentially chewing up with processes, it's tough to get things on the agenda, there are staffing issues, whatever the questions may be. But on strictly this, the application for the third extension, where in August, we're already chewing up one-third of the total number of months that are allowable in the Subdivision Map Act. So, again, I'm pointing fingers, it's just frustrating because we want to get moving. All of that said, what's critical to ownership is that, and we've said this before too, the final map, which will allow for recordation of the map and a parcel that the grocery outlet sits on top of, allows that to be transacted. And with that transaction, the capital that is acquired from that work is then rolled into the next phase. So, that's why so critical that we get the map, the final map, agendized first with the Planning Commission, and we'll be seeing you soon, hopefully, crossing our fingers, on the final map. That's our intent. I just learned from Me, Rea, just a moment ago before the meeting started, that it's their intent to move as quickly as possible. That being said, we heard that there's potentially issues. We'd love to know what they are, because we've been in this process for a while. I was hired on in November of 2021 to get the process rolling, so plenty of time to talk about if there's any issues. We'll be thrilled to take that phone call or even run up here for a meeting on Friday, the day after internal meeting. If there's something that needs to be submitted, we're willing to get it done quickly. So, that concludes my remarks, if you have any questions of us.
At this moment, it doesn't appear that we do. And so, if we do, we'll call you back up. Thank you very much. Let's continue on with the public comment. I do see Betsy Khan as her hand up, but I feel like it's a lingering hand from the prior item. If you wish to speak on this, you can come on or lower your hand. Thank you. So, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Green.
Super quick process question, I think I know the answer. So, we had an application for the third extension, timely filed before the expiration of the second extension.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, if there's nothing further, looking for the action.
Mr. Chair, I move that the County of Lake, County of Lake Board of Supervisors approve a third and final extension of subdivision SD 06-01 for a period of two years to expire January 25, 2026, with the findings listed in the staff report dated August 13, 2024.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. All right. Just real quick for housekeeping, item 7.2 has been taken off. We will be moving that to another agenda. I don't have an exact date, but we will not be taking up item 7.2. So, we are going to move on to, and I am being requested to take a break. Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break, we'll come back at 2:20. And we will take up item 7.3. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, the one I told you. All right, welcome back. We are going to continue where we left off, which was item 7.3. Consideration of update on status of activity for Proposition 64 grants, Cohorts 1 and 3, for illegal cannabis abatement and internal policy development in progress. Director Turner.
Thank you. So, this item, we're excited to bring an update to the board regarding the activities that have taken place to satisfy the tasks that were approved within two separate illegal cannabis abatement grants, Cohorts 1 and 3. Additionally, after, I'll turn that over to our deputy administrator, Shannon Walker-Smith, for that update, since she's really good with the numbers. And she'll walk you through both the tools that we have procured to assist our staff in illegal cannabis abatement. Then, I'll take back the microphone and cover a couple internal policies that are currently in development for, that will provide us with additional transparency in those activities. as well as protecting staff. I'll turn it over to Deputy Administrator Walker-Smith.
Thank you so much. So you have in front of you a handout I prepared that outlines the funding and the results of that funding that have taken place since 2020. So in October of 2020, we were awarded Cohort 1 grant. It's funded through Proposition 64 funds through the Board of State and Community Corrections, or BSCC. Patrick Sullivan was the original project writer and project director of that grant in the era prior to Director Turner. And that was a three-year grant. The budget for that grant was $996,173, so almost $1 million over three years. That grant is a two-parter, so some of the money comes into CDD to do the illegal cannabis enforcement, as Director Turner alluded to. The other part of the grant is a subcontract for education services and case management services that are being provided through Healthy Start at the Lake County Office of Education through their family RAP program, which they do a similar program with probation. So you can see the two goals and objectives that were approved in the Cohort 1 grant. And then following that on the first page is an outline of both the proposed budget, that's the budget that was submitted with the grant application, and the modified budget that we requested when I came on board to replace Patrick as project director. Then on page 2, because we have wrapped up those, that Cohort 1 grant, you have our complete grant term expenditures for that project from grant years 1920 through 2324. About half of the money went out to LCOE for the RAP services, and the remainder was spent on cannabis code enforcement. In the very beginning of that grant, one officer was planned, and then there was a lot of time where there were no staff on the grant. In January of '22, we got, finally replaced the first officer that came onto the project. And so there were about 10 months where it was being run by one officer, and then in that modification, a second officer was requested, and we staffed that position in October of '22. That was the first time the project was fully staffed. And then in addition to that, funds were used to procure satellite imagery through a product called Planet Labs. And in addition to that, our Acela licenses were paid for. That was the database that we are, continue to use, but we're, we're very close to a transition over to a new software. In addition to that, we bought desktop computers, cell phones, satellite phones, cameras, thermal imaging camera, laptops, a setup for mobile printing, body cameras, drones, and a few other tools. In addition, our cell service for those two officers and vehicle mileage was paid for out of grant funds. A Ford Escape was purchased out of Cohort 1 funds. We hired an outside evaluator to help us finalize our local evaluation report at the end of Cohort 1. That evaluator stays on board now for Cohort 3 and continues to help us look at and verify data. And officers also attended training through KCO, which is the Professional Development Organization for Code Enforcement Officers. And then the last expense under Cohort 1 was the required audit, which was recently completed and submitted. So of the $996,000 we are awarded, we were able to pull down $944,000 of that based on approved expenses. Accomplishments during that time is on the top of page 3. As I mentioned, we purchased satellite imagery, software, a vehicle, the mobile installation of printers, and drones were one of the last purchases under Cohort 3. I mean Cohort 1, it was intended for us to start the drone program with Cohort 3 funds, but we had some additional funds, and our funder allowed us to do kind of a pre-purchase on those drones. 2,686 cannabis code enforcement activities were completed during that three years, including 736 illegal sites were identified, and 24,605 plants, that should say plants, were eradicated. There were 860 violations that were identified, and 509 inspections of the 736 sites, and then 28,000 plants identified, and of course, it was the 24,000 of the 28 that were eradicated. And then resolution of complaints in the community, so the 736 sites that were identified came out of 197 complaints, and then of course, our own department work. And of those 197 complaints, 185 cases were opened and closed out of, out of the 197. So that was the end of the Cohort 1 grant. And then the Cohort 1 and Cohort 3 grants overlapped by a little bit. The way they offer these in rounds are not exact from beginning to end. So we were awarded the Cohort 3 grant in May of '23 for five years, which would equal a closeout period of April 30th, 2028. But we couldn't overlap services between the two grants since they were for the same, basically the same activities. So we held off spending Cohort 3 money until we had wrapped up Cohort 1. And so we, we started Cohort 3 in October of '23. The goals and objectives that were approved for Cohort 3 are roughly equivalent to, little bit of languaging there, but pretty much the same as the goals and objectives of the Cohort 1 grants. On the next page, you'll see both the proposed budget for that five-year grant in the column labeled Budget. And then in the next column where it says Prior Expenditures, it's really just indicating that these were expenditures through this reporting period, which ended on 6/30. So of the money that is budgeted, the grant will continue to fund two cannabis code enforcement officers. We have also added in Cohort 3, a full-time office assistant to support those officers' work, and that person mostly does, handles phone calls and does mailing. The grant will continue to support needed equipment, replacement computers, drones, Kevlar vests, laser measure uniforms, office supplies, et cetera. A second code enforcement, cannabis code enforcement vehicle has been approved to be purchased with Cohort 3 funds, and that vehicle is on order. We continue to work with an outside evaluator to look at data on a quarterly basis and verify, especially with the County Office of Education, so that outside evaluator works with both CDD and the County Office of Education to help us compile and verify quarterly reports. Additionally, through these funds, it's one of, these funds are one of the major reasons we were able to move to contract with OpenGov, which will be our new database for all three divisions in CDD. A large chunk of the original contract, the implementation money, kind of the outset money that happened, or was required through that contract, was paid for out of these funds with approval from our funder. So Acela has been inadequate for code enforcement, as I know you guys are aware. We're very excited that we're about nine months into the implementation, eight months into the implementation of OpenGov, and code enforcement will be the first division to go live, and that will happen next month. And that will give us increased transparency, increased ability to track cases and do quality case management, as well as provide the data for the reports needed for this grant. In the other category, that again is mostly training. Our officers are undergoing drone pilot certification. And in addition to that, the training will include additional KCO modules and EPA training. And then there will be a required audit at the end of this five-year period as well. I don't have it in here because it's not a product funded through this grant necessarily, but we also have a contract for Data Ticket. That's our third-party collection service, so that, once we have that product ready to roll, which is just basically pending approval on policies and procedures with Auditor's Office and with the Tax Collector's Office, that will give our cannabis code enforcement officers another tool to use, so that we, we can administer the fines that are outlined in our ordinance and have the support that we need to actually collect on those fines. So that is another tool that our officers will be able to add to their toolbox. Also not in this handout, and I just wanted to mention that we have received two new code enforcement grants. They're not related to cannabis, but the whole code enforcement picture and the resources that we have available, I'd be happy to come back next month and report back about these two new grants we have. One is for illegal dumping sites that we've identified over a couple of years but have been under-resourced to address. We now have funding to, to address some of those. And then we just got a pre-award letter from HCD for a CDBG grant that will create a two-person mitigation team focused on substandard housing and hazardous vegetation. And so those additional resources just add to the pot of, of code enforcement resources, but they're not specific to cannabis. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I believe you were going to take the mic back and finish off the presentation?
Perhaps I should have led with, just a refresher about the mission and the vision of the Community Development Department. Our vision is to provide exceptional public service through three priorities. One is staff recruitment and retention. The second is staff professional development, and the third is fiscal sustainability for both the planning and the code enforcement divisions. If I had led with that, you would have, a few, a number of the points that Shannon had covered would have resonated as consistent with that vision. One thing I'd like to add, on the table you'll see, improve the number of permitted operations and compliance with codes and regulations. And it says unknown, tracked by another department. However, there was activity in the planning division as we accessed the satellite imagery from Planet to be able to view the cannabis cultivation permits who had done the opt-out program. We were able to view real-time satellite imagery of a lot of these very remote locations to verify that there was no outdoor cultivation taking place at that time, saving our team a number of hours, and also then using that time saved to then have onsite visits for the ones that required onsite. So that did in effect help to improve the number of permitted operations and compliance merely by enabling our staff to confirm and verify this compliance, which has improved over the years. And I think last year was the first time that we were able to cover all of our cannabis permits with our annual site monitoring visitations, and we are continuing to do so this year as well. The last part of today's presentation is to discuss a couple of policies that are currently in development within Community Development. One is the drone policy. As, Shannon discussed earlier, we weren't planning on getting the drones until the Cohort 3, but we're able to get them a little earlier. So that has worked out great in that our current, our code enforcement staff has just jumped right into that drone training. However, what is lacking is the drone policy, because part of providing exemplary public service is a transparency for the public, so that we all have the same understanding of the rules and how we operate. So that drone policy has been in progress with our department staff and county council. A number of, one of the reasons why we're really focusing and getting it right is that a lot of the drone policies have been designed for law enforcement officers, which have certain protections that are not provided for code enforcement. And so county council has been doing a lot of due diligence work to make sure that those gaps in protections for staff are going to be included in that policy. The second policy that is, is currently in the, the review stage, or the actual data gathering stage, is a body camera policy. I would like to see this instituted for all members of our staff that provide onsite visitations with, with members of the public. We're currently gathering, we have a staff services analyst acquiring examples of different body camera policies from different jurisdictions, so that we can make sure that we're able to customize it to then meet our needs. The purpose of having this policy in place would then be to provide that transparency to the public of our activities, as well as a protection of our staff that will support retention of staff. Every so often, you know, it happens that we end up getting complaints that have no merit. Having a body camera policy with actual recorded data could help to support our response to such complaint. Both of these policies will be brought to the board for your consideration as soon as they are ready to be brought to you. That concludes our presentation, and we welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions, comments from board members? Supervisor Green.
Thank you for the transparency shout-out in that light. Would love to see this brief report posted with the agenda if possible, and if there's consensus. On the third page, I don't have page numbers, it looks like the third page to me, near the top, there's a table about project accomplishments. The third line item, compliance monitoring inspections of permitted cannabis operations, raised my eyebrows because, and the unknown permits issued and 800-plus active violations. So can you speak briefly to the amount of work being generated in our permitted industry? And, you know, if there's violations being noted, are they, are they attached to the permitted operation? Are they attached to other code, other types of code violations not related to the commercial cannabis permit? So that line item confused me.
Thank you. That does look like an alarming number. So in providing all of these onsite visitations, our, last year, our planning staff would go with our code enforcement staff as a team. We're not doing that the same way this year. But they go with an actual checklist of all the items that we need to make sure are within compliance. Typically, we'll find minimal things that are not in compliance, but are easily fixed, like, hey, that shed doesn't have a permit, you know, something like that. The number of what are considered high severity violations were very few in, in these. And so I'll defer to our code enforcement manager, Marcus Beltramo, if he has anything else to add. But these active violations are not at the level of high severity violations. That number would be about five.
Well, I appreciate that, but some sense of character, 800-plus is still a chunk of change, violations, especially if they ended up getting cited or notices to evade of change violations, especially if they ended up getting cited or notices to evade or something like that. So, and refresh my memory, the total number of permits we have in the cannabis space is what, 120, 140?
We're about 140 now.
Okay. So, you know, if you're getting a six-pack or a dozen, baker's dozen of violations for each and every...
Also, this is over a three-year period.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyway, any clarification on that would be helpful.
Mr. Beltramo?
Marcus Beltramo, code enforcement manager, County of Lake. I also like to add that a lot of those violations are corrected almost immediately. So with any notice that we issue, there's a correction period. A lot of things are corrected almost instantaneously, or within the next couple of days. So they are minimal violations. And even if we were to impose fines or abatement orders, we wouldn't get to that point because the issues have already been corrected.
Next time we present an update, we will have a number of violations corrected within the period. So just to put it a little better context.
Any other comments or questions? So I did have a couple of questions, and again, thank you for the presentation. Some of these policies that you're working on are policies that our sheriff's department obviously already have. The difference would be sworn officers where our code enforcement are not sworn officers, therefore are handled differently. Does that mean that the tool is also less, I don't want to say less useful, but less, provides less of a bolstering of the code enforcement toolkit to get the job accomplished because of the fact that it's going to have to be a different policy than what our law enforcement policy is?
Are you speaking specifically to the drone policy?
So whether it's the drone policy or the body cam.
So yes, Under Sheriff Bingham did provide us with the one, the policy that the sheriff's office has. We, because we're not looking at sworn officers, that's why we're looking at other jurisdictions to see if others have similar adapted body camera policies that will be more customized to our current needs in Community Development.
Okay. Because I'm not so worried or impatient about the drone thing. That'll come when it comes. I think that one's a difficult, dealing with the legalities of the Fourth Amendment and so on. But the body cam, I really feel is an important aspect to create accountability and transparency. What kind of timeline are you looking at before bringing us the policy? Because it appears to me, based on what you've provided here, that you've already purchased body cams.
No.
At least, that's what I read here. Services and supplies and...
Yes.
Talks about the drones, cameras, and then body cams, but I don't know how many that is.
We have two.
Which fits for the two code enforcement officers that this would cover. And so right now, we just have body cams that are just sitting there waiting to be utilized. Just kind of wondering if you have a timeline of when you might be bringing us that policy? Because I think, in my opinion, of course, I'm not speaking for the board, that's an important one that I would like to see before us much sooner than later.
Okay. So far, we're still in the gathering examples from other jurisdictions. After that, we'll go into reviewing and seeing what we can glean from the different policies. So I'm just sort of thinking out loud. We then start conferring with county council to get something that they would consider viable and then bring that to you for consideration. So...
Ninety days?
October?
Maybe 90 days.
October 1st?
No, that would be November 13th.
Thank you. We will go with that.
So I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I, to me, that's an important item for the safety of our officers. And I agree, I've reviewed body cam stuff in the past. I will say, the majority of the time, the complaint does not seem to show, but it creates that accountability, it creates that transparency. And I think it's important, especially as we're sending people out literally in the middle of nowhere. Kind of looking to see if that's a consensus from the board to try and get that back, if possible, within 90 days?
Whatever. I mean, I don't want to rush your timeline, too. So you're doing a lot.
You know, I want it done right. October, November, most of the cultivation is done, so the sense of urgency is not going to be there to me. So sooner the better. I think you'll have a consensus for that, but I don't want to lock them into a 90- or 120-day thing. Let's see what the good code enforcements of officers of California are doing on that subject and learn from that experience and bring it back when it's fully baked, to use that cannabis reference.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with bringing it back when it's ready. It's a complicated process to get going. I know the sheriff department does have body cams and other things, but sooner than later needs to be the conversation because I agree with Supervisor Green of, we've got about eight more weeks and then we're off into the next season. I know we have indoor, we have other stuff in the county, too, so, but I think the major push right now for the industry is over in about the next eight weeks, you know, out there. So anyway, that's my thoughts. So hopefully, we can see something before the end of the year, for sure. But I hate to put a timeline on you when we got, we're trying to draft two different types of things. The drone stuff, I think, is a little more complicated. Those are my thoughts, as soon as you can.
So you have consensus that we'd like to see it back when it's ready?
Absolutely.
And that's...
If it's not ready for you by November 1st, I can give you another update at that time if you would like, but we will endeavor to have it done as soon as possible.
That sounds good to me.
Great. Thank you.
The other thing, I was under the impression that we were ready, set to go with Data Ticket. Is this a specific to violations of cannabis that you need to figure out the details? Or are there still some hurdles to overcome in order to get Ticket, Data Ticket up and running?
Both with Open Gov credit card processing and with Data Ticket and the way that revenue would come in, the tax collector and auditor's office have been very specific that they would like to review policies and procedures for our department in the way that we're going to handle that, those revenue streams before authorizing us to begin using the products. So as you also may know, we've been down an accountant, and so the, there has been some delay in the department on getting our policies and procedures drafted. We're very close to having a draft ready to go to both of those departments for their review.
Okay. And just for clarification, it was mentioned here that there was 24,000 plants eradicated, 509 inspections, 736 sites identified. None of those received fines? Or did they receive fines through a separate avenue of providing fines?
We have not administered fines.
Okay. Those are the questions that I have. I'd love to see those fines starting. I think that just gives a little less incentive to start doing the exact same thing that we just spent hours and hours and hours working on to try and dissuade them from doing so. So hopefully, we can resolve the last bit of the issue so that we can really start putting out those fines. But those were my questions. I think the body cams are truly important. I appreciate the fact that we're continuing to receive this Prop 64 grant funding. I know when I reviewed the video from, I think it was 2020, when we first did this, there was a kind of an approval to get a report from LCOE on what it is that they are doing with the wraparound services programs that we are giving money to. And if and when they are ready, I think, I would like to see that that was already a consensus from the board at that point in time, and we have not received that report.
Okay.
Because it is a large chunk of the amount that we receive from the grant.
We will work with LCOE to get that on it soon.
When they're ready. When they're ready. So that's all that I have. Vice Chair Randall.
So Data Ticket isn't up in general, or are we just speaking? Because I thought I heard from the beginning that it was just, what you were talking about was germane to cannabis. And then when you brought it up, it sounded like you said all of it's not being used yet.
Correct. We are not, we have not yet begun utilizing the Data Ticket service. We are in contract with them, and as soon as we are ready on our end to administer those fines, they'll be ready to start collection on the fines. It's the internal policies and procedures with the other departments that are currently holding us up.
Did they give you a timeline at all?
It's with us right now. Because we have been understaffed in our finance department, it's been difficult to develop the policies and procedures for how we'll handle new revenue streams without an accountant. So we have, we have an accountant now, and we're working, we have drafts of those. They need just a little bit of tweaking, and then they'll go upstairs to Genevieve and Patrick for their review.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? We have A. on Zoom, if you can please provide us your name. I believe I remember, but I don't want to assume.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Angela Ammam. A couple of questions for clarification. Can cohort grant funds, are they or can they be used for abatement? And then also, there was reference made to the number of cases closed. When is a case considered closed? Is it after full abatement when the property is, there's no longer anything, no violations on the property? Is that when a case is closed or when the plants are eradicated? If you can clarify. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your questions. Is it possible to respond?
Yeah, absolutely. We close a case when violations have been resolved. And sometimes there's just a plant violation on a case, and sometimes there's multiple. We have sometimes closed a case prior to full abatement, meaning leaving behind sometimes some materials, especially if the site has been abandoned. So in terms of full abatement, I would say 80% of the time, it's full abatement. Occasionally, there are cases in which some items, not plants, but some items, could be left behind. And could you remind me of the first question again?
Cohort grant funds for abatement?
Oh, can the grant funds be utilized for abatement? Yes, they can.
Okay. Thank you very much for your answers to that. I see no further hands up and no one in the room moving here, so I'll bring it back to the board. Any last comments or questions? I do appreciate the presentation. Thank you for the work that you're doing and looking forward to the policy for the body cams when you're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if I didn't miss anything, I believe our weekly calendar is our last item to discuss. And who wants to get started on that? Supervisor Green.
Sure, I'll go. Zooming this evening for Clear Lake Integrated Science Symposium volunteer assignments. I hope to be helping out on Thursday and Friday as needed, and the Zoom this afternoon will help clarify those needs. Got to go back to the glasses. Wednesday, hope to stop by Big Valley Advisory Council for some feedback on a possible project in their jurisdiction. Thursday, I do see IFT and EMCC. I may be committed up in Robinson, but if you need backup for that particular meeting, we'll cover that in your schedule. And I'm jumping to next week, but just a quick shout-out. On next Wednesday, the 21st, there is a drop-in workshop at Clear Lake State Park for those who want to give feedback on their proposed general plan update, and that'll be in open house format from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Visitor Center at Clear Lake State Park. That's it.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
Yep. Finish up today's meeting. Yeah. That's about it for today. Football season is here, so it's every day now till hopefully December, at least November. But anyway, and all the fall sports have started. It's great to see the kids out there doing everything they need to do, so, and that's all the fall sports. APC LTA meeting in Lakeport here tomorrow morning, I think? At least that's what, is it in Lakeport or...
I thought it was Lower Lake.
On my invite, I thought, I saw it at Lakeport, too.
Oh, it is. City of Lakeport Council.
City of Lakeport tomorrow, so we'll be there with you, Supervisor Spatia. And then Thursday, don't have anything at this point. Kind of decided I do, I will be attending a tribal CPUC hearing that's going on in the county. And then Friday, have Stephen Carter at this point, no? The other CAO is back or what?
No.
We're gonna be on our own.
Oh, that's right. You're out of town. You're on, yeah, that's right.
But if you would like to meet Chief Deputy Matt Rosting.
Oh, Matt, no, go ahead. Enjoy it. I'll enjoy that Friday morning, too. See if I can get something else scheduled. Ben was just asking me something, so I'll tell him I'm available Friday morning, too.
Nice.
Other than that, we have Monday, we have the RRA, and then back here on Tuesday, the 20th.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska?
Tomorrow, I have a meeting with Director Boray, and then I have the BeVAC in the evening. And then Thursday, I will be at the symposium, and then I have the Gobert Council in the evening. Friday, I'm going to go to Sacramento for the quarterly PG&E meeting with RCRC and CSAC. And Saturday is opening day for Clear Lake Youth Soccer League. It's very exciting. So I'll be there all day. And then Monday, I have my meeting with CAO Parker and RRA is, where did we, where is it this time? Do you remember?
I'm sorry?
I'm talking. I can't remember who volunteered. I think it was...
I can't remember either.
Russ? Was it Russ? No, that was last time.
My password thing just changed, so I can't get in there.
So, we'll wait for the...
It just came up right at the end of the meeting.
Well, the agenda will get posted soon. That's it.
Vice Chair Randall?
So Clear Lake Integrated Science Symposium, and then, I know the 15th, I know that there's an evening event, but I think I'm going to have to go to Tango Mike instead Thursday evening. And then, of course, Friday, I will go to the symposium and more than likely go to the movie. And then back here on Monday with this, whatever meeting I have to...
Whoever it is.
And then back here on Tuesday.
Thank you very much. I just want to describe one of the meetings that I had last week. As you all remember, back in June, I think it was, NASA Earth Science Division had put out a map, satellite imagery of Clear Lake. I reached out to Congressman Thompson and asked to be connected with NASA's Earth Science Division. We were going back and forth, wanting to have a meeting together, and we finally had it last week. Water Resources Director Dr. Upadhyay and the program manager Angela De Palma-Dao was at the meeting as well. We received an official apology from NASA. They were, the people we spoke with, were not even aware that those articles were being put out. And so they said they need to work on their communication on their end and that they will reach out to us before putting out further information about Clear Lake to ensure that they are looking at it from an educational purpose, an informational purpose, and not just putting out information that might be interpreted in many different ways. So hopefully, that's the way that it functions from now on. But that wasn't the main reason for the communication with NASA, though we wanted to make sure and let them know that there was an economic impact based on the satellite imagery, as we all received calls from hoteliers and especially our water resources team saying that reservations had been canceled due to the quote-unquote from many of the newspapers around the toxic view of the lake, which is not, that was not necessarily the truth. There was a lot of chlorophyll in the lake at that point in time. In that conversation, we gave them a brief history of the lake to let them understand the ancient lake that we have here, the volcanic soils that surround the lake. We gave them a biology lesson and a geology lesson of the area, and they were very fascinated with our lake. I am attempting to connect them with the Blue Ribbon Committee to see if they could become a federal partner and representative on that committee. And they are very excited to want to continue discussions about how to be a partner and collaborate with Lake County and how to... collaborate with Lake County and how to deal with our lake and the algae. This is obviously a problem that we're seeing worldwide. And while I may have been pushing an exaggeration a little bit, I told them that Clear Lake is the canary in the coal mine for climate change and the impacts to water. We're seeing algae in the oceans, we're seeing algae in the Great Lakes, but our lake is so ancient and so shallow and has high phosphorus soil surrounding it that any changes in climate are going to be seen here first and foremost and whatever they learn from here in solutions are solutions that will work elsewhere, trying to entice them to stay focused on us. So great conversation to be continued and hoping that there is that connection to the Blue Ribbon Committee. For this week, I'm going to be meeting with Greg Folsom, who's currently the, who's currently the interim CEO of Lake County Chamber of Commerce. Then I'm going to be running over to Lake APC and LTA. Thank you for correcting it and that it is in Lakeport. Then on Thursday, Hope Rising Government Board should be meeting. I haven't seen an agenda at this point yet, but I will try my best to be at the EMCC meeting due to the importance of the conversation regarding what appears to be the ambulance ordinance that we've been working on for a while. Hopefully, we can get to that sooner than later because I do have another meeting with Pallet Shelter. They are a tiny home contractor. They are contracted with the state of California. I met with them over in Tampa during the NACO conference, was very interested and because of them having a contract with the state of California, it is a decreased cost in getting them involved in what could be another one of the puzzle pieces in the many solutions we need to deal with homelessness. As you know, the governor did put out a push with a threat of our finances being impacted if we do not start dismantling encampments. I know that that was definitely made more as a directive towards more urban areas, but I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to meet the needs of those that are on the streets to decrease the burden of health issues, the burden of economic issues and just help out with all of that. So continue that conversation. Later that day, I'll be meeting also with the new dean of Woodland Community College for the Lake County Campus, who also oversees the Colusa Center, Dean Ebenhock, and we'll be meeting with her over at Lake County Campus to discuss some issues, not issues, but just to discuss Lake County and the needs of Lake County. One of the things that I will be bringing up, I got, LTA reached out to me to try and figure out, can we have a conversation with Woodland to continue that free college student ride? And so that will be one of the points that I will be bringing up. Then I will finish off that afternoon with a Lake County Continuum of Care Strategic Plan Committee meeting to continue the work that the COC is doing and finish that day off with the Clear Lake City Council meeting. That Friday, I will be at Robinson Rancheria to learn as much as I can about the lake or continue learning as much as I can about the lake. And in fact, myself and Vice Chair Crandall will be making a presentation regarding Middle Creek Restoration. I believe that one will be at the Habemetle site for the Clear Lake Integrated Science Symposium, but looking forward to that presentation as well. And the following week, I will be meeting with the Health Committee from CSAC to discuss some of the activities that I'd like to see happen in the NACO Health Policy Steering Committee that I'm the vice chair on. I'll be meeting with our CAO to discuss our Tuesday meeting and then I'll be back here on Tuesday to conduct the meeting. And that is all for me. That concludes, or from my calendar, that concludes all of our items on our agenda today. Just want to remind everybody, we already took up 8.1. I asked our vice chair if any action was taken and no action was taken from 8.1 and it was during one of those breaks. Just wanted to repeat that just in case that didn't come through. We did have some technical difficulties today. Thank you for everyone's patience. Thank you, Sam Houston. Thank you for Jake Ranky for working so hard to try and make sure that this meeting can be concluded and so we can move on. Outside of that, our meeting is over. We'll see you next week. Take care.